I call to order the April 2022 Legislative Session of Media Borough Council. Please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to all who have joined us, whether in person or remotely. Just a couple of things before we begin. We have a couple of members of council who, for some period of time, might be joining us by electronic means. We have Mark Pekoff on the phone right now, and we might have Liz Romaine, Vice President Liz Romaine, joining us at some point as well. So they're with us, although they're not with us. And the second item is that we expect that, as of next month, our workshop sessions will be in -- hold on one second. Let me start all over again because we had a little technological glitch.
Yes, just Liz joining.
Liz, are you joining us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. We hear you loudly and clearly. Thank you.
Especially the loudly part.
So as of next month, our workshop sessions will be held in the second-floor conference room of Borough Hall, as they formerly were before the pandemic. Fingers crossed. We hope that the numbers are still in a good place in a couple of weeks, but that is the plan for now. There is a possibility that those plans might change depending upon the change in numbers. We just don't know. So if you have an interest in attending the meeting, please be on the lookout, check our website, and any information about a change should be there. All right. So we've had a pledge of allegiance, and now we have approval of minutes. We have three sets of meeting minutes from this past month. We have the workshop meeting minutes, public hearing, and a council meeting set of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the March 3, 2022 council workshop meeting minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the March 2022 workshop meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. We also, as to the public hearing minutes from March 17, do I have a motion to approve those as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any call for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the March 17, 2022 public hearing meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays?
Aye.
I will abstain because I was not present for that meeting, but otherwise the vote is unanimous, in favor. And lastly, with the council meeting minutes from last month, do I have a motion to approve those as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no call for discussion, all in favor of approving the March 17, 2022 council meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
Mr. President, I realized I should have abstained from the previous vote as well. I'm going to abstain from this one for the same reason as you. I wasn't present. So let the record show that, please.
All right. And as well, I will abstain from voting on this motion because I was not present for that meeting. But otherwise, the motion passes unanimously. All right. So we have taken care of some of our housekeeping matters, and we can move along to public comment and privilege of the floor. As always, we'll start with any submissions by way of email. Those who wish to make use of email may direct their comments to comments@mediaborough.com. Comments@mediaborough.com. And either now or at the end of the meeting, Karen Rapinoe will read them out. Please remember that you must leave your name, your address, as well as your question or comment. Karen, do we have any questions or comments by email?
I have one.
Sure. Could you please read it to us?
Michael Straw, 499 West Jefferson. I wanted to provide an announcement regarding the upcoming election. I want to remind all Media Borough residents that May 17 is primary election day. Individuals registered in the Democratic or Republican Party can vote in person at their respective polling place from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on May 17, or they can vote via mail-in ballot before the election and request one at www.vot... wait, www.vot.paa.gov, or request one at the Bureau of Elections at the Delaware County Courthouse prior to May 14. For those who are not registered to vote or are not registered as a Democrat or Republican and would like to vote in the primary, an individual simply needs to visit the same website I just mentioned and register to vote with either party prior to the May 2 voter registration deadline. If you do not know where your polling place is located, you may visit the same website, www.vot.paa.gov, to inquire where your polling place is located. Any further questions, you can contact the Delaware County Bureau of Elections, 610-891-4673. Thank you, and make your voices heard.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other? Karen?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All right. Very good. Is there anybody physically present who would like to address council? Please come to the microphone, tell us your name, your address, and what's on your mind. Mr. Jordan? I've already spilled the beans on the name.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Michael Jordan, 620 North Monroe Street, Media, PA, lifelong resident. I'm here for the Sixers.
The bandwagon has arrived. Excellent.
Media is basketball crazy. Remember Louis Jumbo Johnson, Media's great promoter of B-ball? Let the Philadelphia 76ers know that we, Media, are backing them in the playoffs. Let the 76ers know that there is a place called Media. The 76ers have some of the greatest players in the world. Remember Joel Embiid, Toronto does. Go Sixers.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Just marinate for a moment in that one. That was good. Thank you very much. I still have the hat you gave me a couple of years ago. It sure is. All right. So anybody else who wishes to address council, please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, what's on your mind. Seeing that there are no other takers, we'll move along. We have the Borough Manager Report. Brittany Foreman.
Good evening, council. I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you very much. Does any member of council have any questions for our manager at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to our engineer, Kevin Mattson. Mr. Mattson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items to touch on. On Penn bid at the moment for solicitation is our project for the LED lights along Orange Street. This is a project that is partially funded, or I should say mostly funded, by a grant from Delaware County through the OHCD, ACDBG grant. Also, we had a site walk for the installation of the Audible pedestrian system with the head-up signals. Mr. Paul Lutz, who joined us earlier this month, to walk through the particulars. The contractor is reporting a material delay. Again, so we originally were told that this project was to have started in late March. He's reporting a material delay. So hearing that, I contacted some of our other contractors, who will be doing implementations of other capital projects, to see if there are any other delays in these projects, especially wayfinding. Wayfinding, because it's such a larger project, had me concerned about its timetable. The wayfinding contractor, Allied Signage, is reporting no delay. So I thought that was great news, wanted to share that. And again, we did have the bid opening in March for three projects. It was the roads and highway maintenance, it was the sidewalk maintenance, and also for the armory. The low bidder was the same contractor. So I had reservations about making a recommendation quickly at the end of March. I wanted to do some vetting and make sure that this contractor was qualified, that the recommendations came back strong. And I have completed that. And again, did get all the recommendations back from all of their references, including doing some additional homework. So at next month's workshop meeting, the recommendation will be to award those three contracts to Ocean Construction. But unless there's any other questions, my written report from earlier this month stands about the 15 or so different projects that are active.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Does any member of council have any questions for our engineer at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to our solicitor, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report tonight.
Does any member of council have any question for Mr. Scott at this time? There being no questions, we'll move along to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Last month, we had 585 complaints on the complaint logs. A couple examples: assist other police departments, 39; disorderly conduct, 14; medical emergencies, 59; traffic accidents, 26. And again, the total was 585. I have two proclamations this month. I'll read parts of both of them. Let's see. Sterling Morton. So whereas in 1872 Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was the first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and throughout the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our previous topsoil by wind, by water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, and whereas trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for the homes, and fuel for the fires, and countless others, and therefore be resolved that the Borough of Media proclaims that April 29, 2022 will be Arbor Day. So that's one.
Thank you.
And the other one is one that we do almost every year now, and that's the proclamation for Carol Hubert Summerville. She is now 106. And I think we remember two years ago when she was out on the street waving everybody when she was 104. So whereas Carol Hubert Summerville was born on April 22, 1916, and is now -- how about that, 1916, before World War I, and is now celebrating her 160th birthday, whereas Mrs. Carol, as she affectionately is known by her family and friends, neighbors, is a lifelong resident of Media, attended Media High School, class of 1936. Whereas Mrs. Carol and her husband, the late Paul Summerville, senior, were proud to raise five children in Media, and whereas during the long, productive lifetime, Mrs. Carol has earned the respect and admiration of her family, friends, and people from all works of life. So therefore, I, Robert McMahon, mayor, urge the citizens to pay tribute to her very special day and a very special person. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Long may she wait. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to the council committee reports. Councilman Robinson, property, public works, and fire.
And I'll be quick this evening, I hope. Nothing to report on properties with regards to fire. I have the fire report from our chief for the month of March. We had 27 fire calls, 191 EMS calls, significant alarms, a house fire on March 1 in Aston, a large house fire in Newtown Township on March 21, and another significant house fire in Springfield Township. If you notice, they're all outside of the borough, but we do mutual aid. All our departments are minimally staffed, so when we do have a fire, particularly at this time of year, multiple departments are called alarmed to go to the fire. So as always, our fire department is very busy, and as I say every month, anybody who's interested in serving as a firefighter, please stop into the firehouse. They'd be glad to talk to you, sign you up. And if you're not interested in firefighting, there's also administrative responsibilities at the firehouse. They are a nonprofit, so they have a board of directors, they have executive director, chairman, et cetera. So if you're interested, please stop by. With regards to agenda items, first is I'll be making a motion that we enter into a lease agreement for the property of 111 Manchester Avenue. I do have the lease here, but as I joked with Mr. Hall, we're looking to move some water from 111 Manchester onto our Manchester Park, but I have a four-page lease that I'm not going to read.
License, not lease.
License, excuse me. Agreement, license agreement. And so really, what this is allowing is to have the property at 111 discharge some of their stormwater onto the park. Really, it's to benefit us if it ever does become an issue. The property does have the ability to maintain its own stormwater, and we do have the right at any time to break the lease or to break the agreement and have them start to have the water on their own property. But really, I look at this as neighbors. You know, we just happen to be the one neighbor living next to 111, and it actually serves us, the borough, to have some of that additional stormwater onto our park. So with that, I'd make a motion that we enter into the lease agreement with regards to stormwater releasing onto Manchester Park from the property of 111 Manchester Avenue.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of entering into a lease agreement for 111 -- license -- it's contagious. Let's reel that back in and start all over. All those in favor of entering into a license agreement for 111 Manchester Avenue with regard to drainage, please say aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously.
And last on my agenda, but not least, everyone, Scott, you know me, I enjoy it when we get to sell some of our old assets. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that we authorize the sale of -- and there is a typo on the agenda. It is a 2,000, not a 2,002 trash truck. Photograph right here, if anyone's interested. It's a low mileage, 87,000 miles. It has a CAT Model 3126 engine, whatever that is. And we will be putting that on municipal bid, but actually taking a look at the photograph, it's a relatively good-looking truck, and I'm sure it'll do quite well for another community within the borough, or, excuse me, within the Commonwealth. And second on the list is a 2005 Covota tractor, has a 60-inch mower, a 48-inch plow, a rotating broom, front-end loader, snow blower, and land pride spreader, whatever that is. Again, it's in very good shape. It's just not applicable for the borough right now. We're looking at some other equipment. So this will be going up to municipal bid as well. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the 2,000 trash truck and the 2,005 tractor to be advertised on municipal bid as required under Pennsylvania code.
Motion's made. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, I'll call the question. All those who favor authorizing the sale of the 2,000 trash truck and the 2,005 tractor with attachments on municipal bid as described by Councilman Robinson, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilman Robinson? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along.
I do have one comment.
Oh, sure.
I just want to, via Councilman Robinson, who's on the Properties Committee, commend enhancements to Borough Hall. I mean, the ramp and the steps look beautiful. Well done.
I wish I could take the credit, you know. You know, we sitting at this table can't. It turned out really, really well. I think this is truly a product of us being able to find and enter into an agreement with a contractor to do basic maintenance for the property. They come, they do it, they did a great job, and there's other projects on their list. So far, our engineer, our Public Works Director, Brittany, and all the Borough staff have been very, very pleased. So yes, it looks a lot better. It looks -- the wall that was up there originally was never that great, and this just actually makes the place look that much better. So thank you very much. And I'll make sure it gets passed on to the right people.
Let's move along then to Councilwoman Joy Washington's report. Personnel.
All right. I think the only thing that we have, I don't think we have any pending announcements, but we are going to, I guess we're going to vote on the digital communication policy, and I guess since it was updated and kind of cleaned up about what we include in the newsletter on the website, and I think I'm forgetting one thing.
Social media.
Social media. Okay. Thank you. So I guess I want to put up to a form of a motion on accepting the current digital communications policy for Media Borough.
I would second that motion.
There is a motion to adopt the digital communications policy. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of adopting the digital communication policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. I should note at this point that Mr. Pekoff has texted me and told me that he is now boarding, and he's no longer on the call. So the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And that concludes my report.
Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilwoman Washington? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along then to Vice President Liz Romaine. Liz, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We certainly can, loudly and clearly.
Oh, gosh, does it sound like I'm screaming?
Let's just keep your pitch perfect.
Oh, okay. Hold on. Oh, okay, great. So I just have two items on my agenda, Mr. Hall. The first is just a follow-up. If you recall, at the workshop meeting that we had two weeks ago, I brought up a discussion point for a parking lot on Baltimore Pike that we sort of refer to as the Wells Fargo Lot. And if you recall, I had suggested that council consider, you know, taking over the management of that lot on nights and weekends to alleviate some of the parking pressures that the borough has. We have visitors come to town to dine, et cetera. And, you know, we spoke with Solicitor Scott, we spoke with the insurance company, and Paul Robinson actually reached out to the property manager, and we learned that the townhouse has gone into an agreement with the property manager for that parking lot. They will take over liability and responsibility for that lot on nights and weekends. So the sort of approach that I had suggested that council start to go down the road to consider really is no longer applicable. It is a win for the borough. Our visitors will be able to utilize that lot. There will be no more parking. And Mr. Robinson, that is effective immediately, correct?
That I would have to check. I was told that they have entered into an agreement. I do believe that because the borough contacted the property manager, that we might have shaken the tree a little bit and got them to move a little bit quicker than what they had anticipated. I will follow up to find out when it goes into effect. I was told that no more cars would be towed, and that was as of last week.
Yeah, thank you. So maybe it's effective now, or certainly it is on the horizon. Either way, you know, it certainly is a win for the borough and a win for visitors, so that we can continue to really deliver on that great visitor experience, particularly as we're on the cusp of a busy and return-to-almost-normal event schedule in Media Borough, which brings me to my second point. And by the way, before I move on, I really want to thank a couple of people that helped us to explore this option. So, you know, thank you, Brittany Foreman, thank you, Solicitor Scott, thank you, Paul Robinson, for continuing to kind of push this, and thank you to Kevin Boyer for his guidance on this. I think there might be other opportunities like this for council to at least ask some questions and consider and explore. So thank you, everyone, for being sort of game to asking some questions and considering moving forward. And just a side note, the MBA has committed to continuing to really explore parking issues and seeing how the MBA can help educate our business community, our visitors and our residents about where to park or alternative modes of transportation, as Councilwoman, you know, Washington really brought up very smartly at the last workshop meeting. So the MBA has committed to continue to explore that, so hopefully we'll come back in the next couple of months with some suggestions and some tactics on how we can approach that. But moving on to my second agenda item, you know, I mentioned that we're starting to return to somewhat a normal 2022 calendar of events. On March 4 is going to be the start of Dining Under the Stars. So I do have a small update.
May 4.
And hopefully, Councilwoman -- what's that? Oh, don't steal my salad, I'm getting there. So I'm hoping that, you know, Councilwoman Washington is really excited. I was alerted that the 501st Garrison Karata will be making an appearance at Dining Under the Stars. And if you don't know who the Garrison Karata is, it's actually a group of volunteers in central and eastern Pennsylvania that portray characters in the Star Wars film franchise. And they go out and they visit like children's hospitals, and they participate in community events to really sort of have a lot, you know, have a lot of fun and give back to the community. So we have received word that they will be making an appearance at Dining Under the Stars on May 4 or May the 4th, or May the 4th, be with you. We don't know what the characters are going to be. They have not confirmed the characters, but we do expect there to be sort of a little bit of a fun take on that date. So please put that on your calendar, May the 4th. Just a reminder that Dining Under the Stars this year will be Wednesdays only. While we did apply for a mass gathering permit for some Thursdays and Saturdays, they'll only be utilized if Wednesdays, you know, consistently get canceled because of weather or other issues. So those are really in our back pocket, but the MBA is really just focusing on those Wednesday events for now, May through the end of September. So that's all my announcements. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Do we have any questions for Vice President Romaine? No, we have no questions for you. Thank you very much. Is it now the time?
That concludes my report.
Excellent. And now, do I understand correctly that you will need to move -- if there's something else that you need to move along to?
I'm going to stick around for a little bit longer, but may not make it to the end of the call.
Okay. Well, just for ease, we'll have Vice President Protam, Kevin Boyer, who will call the motions on my portion of the report.
Okay.
All right.
Correct. Thank you.
So we'll move along then to my portion of the report, Community Development and Historic Architecture Review Board. I have no announcements. I do have three items for action tonight. The first is a county agreement regarding wayfinding. The wayfinding project is moving along, and we should expect to see more and more of that as this year progresses. Part of that will be some signage on the county property, the courthouse property. There'll be three directional signage boards at the corner of Front and Olive, at the corner of Front and Orange, and a little bit farther up in Orange Street, at Second Street, near to where the walkway is into the government center. So there'll be three boards that will direct visitors to the borough to places of interest in the borough, including State Street and all the businesses that are there. But as always, when somebody comes to a local government, even if it's another local government, and they wish to put something on that property, there is a legal agreement, just spells out rights and obligations, and that's what this is. It will allow placement of those three wayfinding boards, and will also hold the county harmless should there be any incidents related thereto. What those could be, I don't know. It seems pretty darn remote, but this is the way things get done. So I move that we adopt, we enter into an agreement with the county with regard to wayfinding signage on the courthouse property.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Item number two is a proposal for bid specs, construction inspection, et cetera, for Plum Street. You might think of Plum Street as three segments in the downtown. One from our parking lot up to State Street, one from State Street on over to Jasper Street, and from Jasper Street on over to Front Street. We're talking about the middle portion, the one that extends from State Street towards the back of Deals. This is a project that has been on the back burner for quite a number of years. There's quite a long history and quite a bit of community involvement in this. But essentially, it is a redo of that segment of Plum Street. It is a bit tired. It needs some help. This design, although it's not final, we anticipate will include a significant number of native plants and trees, which currently are of native plants and trees, which currently are lacking on Plum Street. Will include a new water feature. Will include stormwater retention features. So this is a rather, really a neat project in a tightly built-out community like we have that will incorporate some progressive environmental elements. Of course, we are not designers here, so we need some assistance. And a company called NV5, which has done quite a bit of work in the borough and done it quite well, has submitted a proposal for roughly about $150,000 for the final design, the bid specs, construction inspection of Plum Street. So I, tonight, I make the motion that we accept that proposal.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Brian, just some clarity. Final design, I mean, we had talked at workshop that we were going to try to incorporate residents to try to do, you know, so if that's still the case, I'm fine with it. I mean, I thought the design aspect was more of the mechanics. You know, no one's been underneath that brick walkway since 1971. If we're going to be making stormwater changes, electrical changes, water features, we're going to have to do that. But I'm still, you know, a big believer that we need to get our residents involved. I had been contacted by three different businesses also saying that they would like to kind of be part of it. And as I've said at workshop, and I'll say again, you know, we did it before, 20-some years ago, 30-some years ago. I think our residents, as we say very often, are very smart. They know their town, and I think they'd be the best ones to help do the final design. So.
So the answer to your question is yes. That's the short answer. As you know, there's already been a robust amount of community involvement in this process, but there will be additional opportunities for the public, be they residents or business owners, to comment and add their input on the project. So it will be a design that will reflect the participation of residents and business owners.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion passes.
The last item for action tonight on my report is a resolution 2022-33. This is one of those motions that is fairly descriptive. I can just read it. Is a TCTI grant application for Jefferson Street Traffic Calming Feasibility Plan. Anybody who's lived in media for more than a nanosecond knows that Jefferson Street has been and continues to be a sore spot for many of our residents, especially in terms of traffic. It is a well-known cut-through for those folks who don't wish to wrestle with the traffic on Baltimore Avenue. And this is an opportunity to get some grant money to help us determine the feasibility of certain traffic calming features to Jefferson Street. So this will be a wonderful way to help implement some of the recommendations that have already been made by way of our traffic calming plan. And, but you don't get the money for that unless you apply for it. And that's really what this is. It's an application for us to try to get some money to that end. So I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, I will call the question. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Resolution passes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Oh, then I guess it's me.
All right, we'll pass the baton on over to Public Safety, Recreation, and Board of Health, Councilman Kevin Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few announcements, one for, well, actually, two for REC. As I announced at the workshop meeting two weeks ago, Media Youth Summer Camp, the registration is opening. You can go to the Media Youth Camp, or the Media Youth Center website and find which weeks are open. The camp starts the week of June 20th, which is right after school, and it runs through roughly mid-August. And the borough residents are subsidized. There's a $65 discount, so I believe it's $100 for borough residents and $165 for those not in the borough. And you can pick weeks. There is one week in July the camp doesn't meet. I believe that's mid-July for a basketball camp, but otherwise, the camp weeks, meets weekly from 9 until 3:00. So you go to the website and get the details for registering for that. The other REC announcement is that this past Saturday, for the first time in three years, REC held their Easter party. It was wonderful. I congratulate the members of REC for a really good job, and actually, I'll be appointing three new members that were there and participated at the end of my report.
Who was the Easter bunny?
I'm not really sure. But there was an Easter bunny there.
He was.
And it went really well. Kids were overjoyed. We actually had eggs left over, so I think they were, there was a notice on Facebook people could come pick them up. But anyway, I could go on and on and on, but it was wonderful. The weather cooperated, the, there was a truck with soft pretzels and icies there. The fire truck, the fire department brought their truck, and that was wonderful as well. So couldn't have gone any better, and I congratulate everyone on REC for such a great event, and hopefully we'll keeping, be able to keep on doing it. So I do have some business items, the first of which is to tender offers, offers of full-time employment to Justin Major and Aaron Scott for employment as media police officers. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Could you just put the word conditional in there?
Oh, conditional, yes. Yeah, I make the motion that we offer the position of police officer to Justin Major and Aaron Scott, condition on their passing of physical exam.
Full-time position?
Full-time position, yes. Full-time police position.
Third time, I'll second. I'll third it.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion?
I think we've got some good people coming up on board.
Agreed.
Very excited.
All right then, so I'll call the motion. All those in favor of hiring Justin Major and Aaron Scott as full-time police officers for the media police department contingent upon passing full physical testing, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I do have a few mass gathering permits, so these are ones that we have done in the past, so I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. The first is number three, the permit for the media farmer's market. They will go into their spring and summer schedule where they will meet weekly beginning the first Sunday in May, and that would be from 8:00 in the morning until 2:00 PM. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. And we have, actually, we have one of the applicants for this right here, just a point of clarification. The setup time is the same this year as it was for the year before, the year before, and the year before, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there any further question or discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the media farmers market for this coming year, 2022, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next mass gathering permit is for the media elementary parent-teacher group Spring Fling. This will be on Friday, June 3rd, from 4:30 to 9:30. That will also correspond with the first, hopefully, movie night for REC, which will be presenting movies in the park again. And we usually coordinate our first movie to go along with the media, essentially, the spring party at the end of the school year. So I make a motion that we approve the mass gathering permit. This is for Friday, June 3rd, from 4:30 PM to 9:30 PM, and this is on Edgemont Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the media elementary parent-teacher group Spring Fling Family Celebration, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next mass gathering permit is for the media arts councils, they're calling it the Jasper Street Jam. We have approved one of these previously, but now I believe this is a weekly event to be held, well, to be held on the events, and again, not weekly, monthly, it's a monthly event. And this would be in the Jasper Street behind the media arts council. We've discussed this at Public Safety, and no one had any issues with it, so I make a motion that we approve the mass gathering permit for the media arts council Jasper Street Jam on July 16th, August 6th, and September 17th, from 9 till 7:00.
Second.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? I have a question. Will there be amplified music?
I understand that there will in the Jasper Street area. They're aware of the limitations on that, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, it's amazing how far sound travels and how clearly it travels in media borough.
Yes, they are aware of that.
Good. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application of the media arts council for its Jasper Street monthly jams, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And my last mass gathering permit is for the holiday Santa parade. This is not the Santa stroll, this is the actual parade. Slash fun run, slash block party. This is something we've done in the past, again, pre-pandemic. This will be on Sunday, November 27th, which is the Sunday at the end of Thanksgiving weekend, from 1:00 PM till 7:00 PM, and I make that in the form of a motion.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the holiday Santa parade fun run block party, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So that takes care of the mass gathering permits. Item number seven, this is something we discussed at the workshop meeting two weeks ago, and this is to authorize the advertising of bids to complete the traffic calming projects that we had voted on for Jefferson Street, numbers 3C and 3D, and Olive Street, 6C, and I make that in the form of a motion.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the advertising of bids as described by Councilman Boyer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, and the last three items of business will be each a resolution appointing new members to the REC board. Kate O'Neill, Susan DeVito, and Brendan Potash were absolutely fabulous this past Saturday. They were there, they helped, they organized, they were wonderful. So we are happy to have them on REC, and this is to kind of formalize their appointment. So I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-34 to appoint Kate O'Neill to the REC board for an unexpired term expiring of 12/31/23.
Second.
Motion's been made and double-seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-34, which will appoint Kate O'Neill to the recreation board for a term that would expire December 31st, 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And the next resolution, 2022-35, is to appoint Susan DeVito to the REC board for an unexpired term expiring December 31st, 2024. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-35, which will appoint Susan DeVito to the recreation board for a term expiring December 31st, 2024, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And my final resolution, 2022-36, is to appoint Brendan Potash to the REC board for a five-year term expiring in December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-36, which will appoint Brendan Potash to the recreation board for a five-year term that will expire December 31st, 2026, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Is there any questions from any member of council for Councilman Boyer at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to Councilman Williamson, Finance, Library, and Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. Note too, also, since Mr. Pakoff isn't here, I'll be giving his portion of the report as well, so I'll finish us off. Under Finance and, under announcements, the most important one, and the only one I'll focus on tonight, is the library book sale. That's happening this weekend. It's their most important fundraiser. It's very significant to them, and it's probably one of the best regional book sales that I know of, and I've been to many. It's very good. They're looking forward to seeing you there. I will be there as a cashier on Saturday afternoon, so I expect to see you there too, with cash. Or a credit card, as you prefer, where it's moved into the 21st century. Okay. The second thing I will move is ratification of March's bills. From the general fund, we drew $246,682.64. From the recreation fund, $4,246.06. From the liquid fuels fund, $141,500. And from the capital fund, $347,211.76. I move ratification of March's bills.
Second that.
Motion's been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion?
Peter, you may not know, with liquid fuels, was that taken care of 2021 road resurfacing?
I don't know offhand, there was discussion in the Finance Committee about making sure that we're whole on the extra money. I know that's being taken care of, but I don't know offhand whether it was drawn on this month. The answer is yes, from the borough manager. So you should swivel your head the other direction if you want a direct answer. Anyway, all right, so did we move and second that?
We have not. We've had a question. Is there any other questions concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying payment of the borough's bills for this past month, March of 2022, in the amounts specified by Councilman Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. My third item is really not going to be a motion tonight, but, well, it may be. We'll see how this conversation goes. The Finance Committee was approached by the fire company a couple of days ago with a really compelling story. They ordered an ambulance last summer in anticipation of a significant price increase in that kind of equipment, and they got ahead of it. And in the past, they've been able to, by virtue of their existence as a fire company, gain very favorable terms for a loan, and they found that the policy at their bank has changed, and now the bank requires us as a municipality to, in some form, guarantee the loan, in a sense, being a cosigner, being like the parent to the young folks buying their first house. The Finance Committee was open to that, but was unsure of the exact mechanism. So I'm going to ask the, our municipal solicitor, just to opine briefly, on what forms of assistance we may be able to provide for them.
Well, you can, you can guarantee debt, but the type of debt is, there's two different types, two different avenues they can go down. Anytime you agree to debt that is of more than one year, committing future councils to expenses, you have to file with DCED and demonstrate that you're within your debt limits and get their approval. And it's, 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 there would be no problem with that, I have no, you know, no concerns about it, it just takes a little time. And alternatively, they could structure this loan so that it's a lease that is cancelable any year. And lenders do both of these. I don't know what it is they've applied for. And, but I understand, what I've been told is that if you guarantee it, the interest rate will be 2% lower than if you do not. So I'm kind of waiting to see what form of debt it is that, so they're applying to, is it Santander?
Yes.
Right, so, and to a municipal lending department. So, you know, we're dealing with some lender that is, knows municipal lending, because not all banks do, and they sometimes will pitch stuff to you that is problematic. So those are the two options it could take. It's kind of the lender's, you know, I don't know what, what this deal is with the 2%. I don't know if they're expecting a full debt filing, or if they're doing it as a lease rental.
So we don't really know everything we need to know to make a formal motion tonight. That might occur next week. But what I wouldn't mind doing is releasing the solicitor and the staff to determine what exactly the easiest, most simple, fastest way to do this that appropriately guarantees our finances.
Well, and I think at the end of the day, you're looking to be, I would just want to do the due diligence to be clear that this is going to result in a 2% lower interest rate, and I think that's the real issue here. And are you willing to put yourself on the line for that?
Yes, for my colleagues, the difference, depending on the length of the loan, it's around $10,000, $12,000 that they would save by using us. So it's significant to them, and, but it may- But it may carry liabilities for some reason that I don't understand right now that may cause us to say no. So for right now, I wouldn't mind, I guess I'm making a motion to release the solicitor and the borough staff to finalize those details with the fire company and report to us at the workshop, if I can.
Yeah, and I think that motion's appropriate. I just want to point out that you will need, there will be a follow-up where you will have to approve loan documents. So if for any reason this goes south, this is not your last bite.
Yes, this isn't the last bite at the apple. In other words, we'll get a final vote.
I do appreciate, I mean, the fire company and I as liaison, we really do appreciate finance. $10,000 is almost three turnout uniforms for firefighters. And it's one of these things, you know, why should we give $10,000 more to Santander when we can be using that to help our own residents? So this is something I'm sure we can work out. I know our debt limit is significantly higher than $200,000. You know, DCED really is nothing more than they keep a record to make sure that some rogue municipality doesn't go crazy with their lendings. So I don't think it would be that difficult. Any direction will be a plus, and I do appreciate us, you know, working it together with them.
And I think I interrupted the flow and started talking before there was a second. So I believe Mr. Williamson made a motion and hasn't been seconded, so.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any call for further discussion concerning the loan? Seeing that there is none, I will try my best to articulate the motion. I suppose I can do a Boyer and say, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Why don't we do that?
That's a good one.
That's a safe way.
Why don't we do that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report for Finance, Library, and Shade Tree. I will soon become Mr. Pakoff, unless you have questions for me.
There are no questions.
Okay. In my role as Mr. Pakoff, I'm reporting for the, sorry, yes, just the environmental advisory council. He has one resolution, but he does have a number of announcements. The first is that an ad hoc committee of the EAC has been formed to decide how to spend the $36,000 and change check from Sunoco, which council accepted in March. A different committee of the EAC is exploring implementation of, quote, "day without a car," unquote, an event in the borough for some time this summer. This is not something the borough has made up. It's actually a national movement that they're trying to adopt here. But Mark says that there will be more information on that next month. Working with the MBA, a focus group was held earlier this month, followed by a meeting for local business owners last Monday to garner their input for the single-use plastics ordinance. Two business owners who live in municipalities similar to Media shared their experiences with plastic bag ordinances in their communities, and they remarked that Media was really good for actually seeking the input from businesses before they actually made the transition, if we do it at all. They said that none of the other communities had sought such input, so Media was doing, is doing a good job. He suspects that the ordinance may be introduced in May and perhaps voted on as soon as in June. And he thanks the MBA for their continued support and willingness to work out the issues before the ordinance is written. Okay, that's the announcements. The last thing is a resolution to have Media become a B-City USA affiliate. It's a standard resolution. And, Lynn, if you want to come up to the mic in case I have any follow-up questions, you know, it has a, for those of you that don't know, just pollinators, those insects and sometimes animals which fertilize fruits and seeds have been dropping precipitously globally. And it has tremendous impact, not just on apples and oranges, but on all living things, since they depend on this kind of pollination to stay healthy. So B-City is an approach to making it, making our environment healthier for all those sorts of creatures. And it binds us to a few things. The EAC will become our B-City sponsor. It's authorized to host at least one educational event or pollinator habitat planning or restoration each year. We're supposed to install a sign and maintain a part of our webpage describing the initiative and provide reports of pollinator-friendly activities we've accomplished, and, I like this, our recommended native plant species list and integrated pest management plan. We're supposed to develop a plan to expand pollinator-friendly habitat on public and private land. So we can certainly do that ourselves on public land, but we'd have to incentivize it for private land. Again, we would help people choose what plants to grow on their private lots. And importantly, for public works staff, they would develop an integrated pest management plan so that they can wisely reduce as much as possible their use of pesticides and herbicides. And if we don't do a good job, our annual application may be denied. That's another thing. We apply every year for a new designation. Those were the main points I saw. Lynn, is there anything you want to add?
Well, I think with the integrated pest management, I've spoken to Borough Streets' manager, and I think you're already complying to that pretty much. So I think we're a step ahead of that. As far as encouraging people to plant pollinator plants, I have already ordered, I think we're going to do it whether or not the resolution is passed, but I ordered some plants. I have a wholesale account with a major grower, and people are already anxious to order those. They'll only, they'll be less than $30 for 14 plants, and with instructions on how to plant them. So people are interested in purchasing those, too. So I don't think we'll have a problem. We can host events at the farmers market if we need to. Our manager is very agreeable to doing that.
It aligns very well with one of the findings of the Open Space Plan, which suggested the exact same thing, like a program to help folks decide how to best plant their yards for, you know, ecological outcomes.
And creating pollinator pathways, or.
Right. So that's, that's the resolution. I mean, we've been a Tree City USA as long as I know, so this is yet another similar thing.
I think it's 34 years.
Yeah.
Just a procedural question for Mr. Scott. I know that Ms. Costin was dragged up to the microphone by Councilman Williamson. Is there a requirement that she identify where she lives?
Where I live? Would you like to know?
Sorry, you got roped into it.
It's the president's wall.
Okay. Yes, I live at 6 Foxcroft Lane in Metal Town Township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Note the verb the president used was dragged.
Dragged.
I dragged her up there. I don't think so. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll second.
All right. Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-37, which will be an element to media borough becoming a B-City USA town, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my combined report. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Peter Williamson in his guise as Mark Pakoff this evening? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to our second public comment and privilege of the floor. Ms. Rapinoe, have we received any email requests or questions?
We have not.
Thank you. If there's anybody who's present here tonight who wishes to address us at this time, please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your mind. Yes.
This is often called, Bill Martin 203 East Front Street, right across the street from the ball field. This is often called the good and welfare section of the meeting, where people talk about, you know, stuff that's important to them, or important, or, and I observed a couple of things today, like, tonight, that I would like to talk about. Number one, on the way over here, I walked over, and on the way over here, I came across a, I was walking up the sidewalk, and a little thing on the sidewalk, what the heck is this? You know what it was? It was a cord. There was a little, one of these little protector things that you see in industrial situations. It's like a little up-down thing that protects a cord that's running across the floor. This is coming out of the yard and is charging the electric car, which is parked on the street. Now, it happens that this particular property was the subject of a series of divisions, subdivisions, rather. There was a dissolution of the marriage. The owner wanted to sell it. One of the requirements that Borough Council had put on the subdivision was that there be a driveway on the side lot of this property. The subsequent owner, the eventual owner, that came to the zoning hearing board and asked that they have that particular request removed, that is, the Borough Council had required that they put off-street parking, so that you couldn't park on the street, you had to have your own parking, two spots on the lot, on the yard. The owner came to zoning hearing board and said, "Look, I got plenty of parking on my street. I don't need to put on blacktop on my yard." And we thought that was, you know, kind of a good idea. Now, subsequent to that, the upshot is now they don't have a place to park, and they have a cord on the sidewalk. Now, okay, they got a cord on the sidewalk, that's fine. My question is, that's the first one I see. How many of them are we going to have? We're talking about hundreds of cars that are going to be in the borough. They're going to have to be hooked up eventually at one time or another during the day. So what do we want to do? We want to get something in place for folks that don't have a place that can drive up on their yard to do their hooking up. Now, whether you'd have some sort of a mast affair, or some sort of a goalpost kind of thing that went over the sidewalk, and you could then do your thing, but you're going to have to accommodate, we're going to have to accommodate these people that are going to have these needs, because that need isn't going away. People are not going to be, you know, the next car you buy is probably going to be an electric car. So that's number one. The second thing, we talked about having the signage thing here for, you know, for the courthouse, tell people where to go and so forth. We have these boxes around the borough, which have these little grid patterns on them, tells you where you are in the borough, and you are here, and you used to be here. And some of them, like, they got a little shabby. They got, you know, the plastic broke, or it was the sun, or whatever it is, and they're kind of in rough shape. I haven't looked at them lately, but we might want to look at that at least so that we could, are they gone?
They're going to go.
Oh, they're going to go? And then what?
They'll be replaced.
Oh, then people are going to be, oh, they're using the blue line, then, walking around with their phones, following the blue line. All right, got it. I got it. All right. And thirdly, and lastly, the thing about May the 4th on State Street is so cute. That is the biggest day of the year. That's May the 4th. That's Star Wars Day. You know, may the 4th be with you. This is the big day. And for this troupe to be doing their thing in the borough, this is a big deal. This is something big here. So as Chewie would say, "Meh."
I have no idea where we go from here, aside from a motion to adjourn. But, Bill, if you would not mind, if you could email, whether it's Brittany, our manager, Brittany Foreman, or Jim Jeffrey, our chief code enforcement officer, the address of that property, because it might very well fall afoul of our codes at present. It could be a tripping hazard. I think that we should be aware of that. So if you wouldn't mind, you're not.
Billy, I know the address.
I think I know it. Okay. It is something that perhaps we should begin to take a look at, at CDC.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so.
Mr. President, just a point of clarity. The kiosks that are around town, they're not just being removed. They're being replaced with really new and improved kiosks. And you can see the design on the Wayfinding Plan, which is currently on the website. So, again, I was looking at the one that was adjacent to the theater this afternoon. It is really broken. It's not in great shape. The plexiglass, it needs a shot in the arm. So part of the Wayfinding Project that I mentioned earlier is that those kiosks, including the agreement that we have with the county that was part of tonight's agenda, that's an area that's starting for kiosks. They're being replaced. I think there are eight locations throughout town.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Martin. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Good night, folks. See you next month.